This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on April 18, 2024, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. I exit to my right and left of council chambers.
Diane Hoffman, can you lead us in the presidential duties?
To the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rockwell.
Anne Foster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilman Hirsch.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Councilmember Stoney.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw.
Yeah.
Borough Administrator.
Here.
Honors and awards, before we go here, council member please remember to speak into the microphone. Tonight, we do have a special award that I'm super excited about, and it's a proclamation in honor of Judge Barnett Hoffman. And I just want to share a little bit about why this is such a special award. Judge Hoffman, I think it was his honor and it was his pleasure to ensure that the Ida Kushner grant went into play and the various areas that this grant was given to. And I just want to showcase a little bit about the hard work that he put into the Kushner grant and made sure it was distributed in many, many areas in town that everyone benefited. But before I say that, Leonard Kushner was a Highland Park resident, and he was a former police officer at the Police Department. And one of the things I think Leonard loved more than anything else in this world was his mom. And Ida Kushner, his mother, he made sure that the money that he left, he bequeathed to the town and to Judge Hoffman to distribute, was to go in honor of his mom. And some of the things that he left this money for was to our First State Squad, he got a new ambulance, our Police Department, we got police vehicles, to the Zone 16 Center, funds went there as well, to the food bank, a fire truck for the Fire Department, for the Highland Park High School field track, for the library, and soon-to-be open library, you'll see some of the contributions that he made there. Such things as the Daiquirre Bank, needs a special needs register, and a host of other things that he left this money for. And Judge Hoffman was the person that helped us to secure the funds and to have it executed to all the various projects. Because he was a police officer and he wanted to make sure that way after he was gone, that he kept Highland Park safe. And I'm going to ask council member George, the Chair of Public Safety, to read the proclamation for Judge Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. It's truly a sadness that it is a remembrance, but it's a delight to remember in the proclamation in honor of Judge Barnett Hoffman. Whereas the borough of Highland Park takes pride in its residents who achieved prominence in their professions and comport themselves with dedication, ethics, and skill. And whereas Barnett Hoffman was born in New Brunswick, graduated from New Brunswick High School, Rutgers College, and Rutgers Law School in Newark. He served in the United States Army, was stationed in Seattle, Washington, and was honorably discharged as a captain in March of 1968. He then served as a part-time Assistant Prosecutor in Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office before working in private practice in Highland Park. And whereas Judge Hoffman returned to work full-time in the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office in 1978 as First Assistant Prosecutor, he was nominated by Governor Brendan Byrne to the Middlesex County District Court in 1981, appointed to the Superior Court, and renominated by Governor Tom Kane. In 1983, Judge Hoffman was assigned to the Criminal Division in Middlesex County, where he served until his retirement in 2002. And whereas among his many accomplishments in this role as judge, Judge Hoffman founded the Middlesex County Adult Substance Abuse Program, or ASAP, at the Middlesex County Jail in October 2021, the first such program in the state. The program has had over 1,000 graduates since its inception. He also taught at the National Judicial College in Reno, Nevada, the Vermont Judicial College, and the Florida Judicial College. And whereas Judge Hoffman served on the faculty of Rutgers University's Department of Criminal Justice and was the co-author of this long annual Sex Crimes in New Jersey: Understanding the Process in the Law. He was president of the Alumni Association at the Rutgers Law School, served on the Rutgers Board of Trustees from 1981 through 1987, was president of the Jewish Social Service Committee, was an active member of the Highland Park Conservative Temple and Center, and served on the St. Peter's Hospital Board of Trustees. And whereas in his final years, Judge Hoffman served as the executor of the estate of retired Highland Park Police Department Officer Leonard Kushner. In that capacity, he worked with attorney Jeff Hyman, his wife Diane Hoffman, and Lee Livingston, and awarded $4 million to well-regarded charities, mostly from Highland Park. And whereas Judge Hoffman passed away on April 21st, and survived by his wife of 60 years, Diane, his children and their spouses, Sam and Andrea, Eva and Ken, Patty and Chris, and his seven grandchildren, Jack, Julie, and Clara, Theo, Archie, Tyler, and Ellen. Now therefore, the mayor, on behalf of the council, and all of us, know Judge Hoffman's passing with great sadness, and extend the condolences of the borough to his family. We thank Judge Hoffman's family for his many selfless acts of service to and in Highland Park and their support of him in doing so.
At this time, I'm going to ask Diane to come forward to receive her proclamation. Phil, would you like to do this with me?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for bestowing this lovely proclamation in honor of my husband. This was truly a labor of love and honesty, actually 18 months of his life. And I think it gave him a purpose that went over and above this incredible career that he had, because he got to meet wonderful people. And I don't know if you know, but this came as quite a surprise to him that he was the executor. He has no idea. And it turned out that the Police Department, who are his friends, the mayor, and everyone that is a potential benefactor, Lee, who's here tonight, was his sidekick. And the two of them, mainly with knee coaching, had quite a wonderful, wonderful time. It's truly a gift to be able to give away $4.4 million of someone else's money. And he enjoyed every minute of it. And I thank you all for being so receptive and supportive. And I know that even though everything is made in honor of Ida Kushner, he will remember that Barnett Hoffman was truly behind this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move into the approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve minutes for September 21st, 24th, 2024, work session meeting on October 1st, 2024, regular session meeting as distributed.
So, Rockwell.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoney.
Yes.
And now we're going to move into council reports. Council member George.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Phil George, and I'm council liaison to the Public Safety Committee of the very short report tonight. Chief wants me to remind everyone that the annual Truck or Treat event is Tuesday, October 29th, starting at 6:00 p.m. through 8:00 p.m. at the Community Center on South Sixth Avenue. The Police Department will be providing fun games and kids, and it's fun time for adults too, as anyone who's been there would know. This year, you can sign up for decorating your car for Halloween, which seems like quite a challenge, but quite a lot of fun. Contact Officer Fitzgerald at D Fitzgerald, that's F-I-T-Z-G-E-R-A-L-D, at hpborough.com for more information and to register for car decorations. For the library, the opening is getting nearer. Temporary facility was closed, the staff has shifted our holdings to the main library, and the new electronic facilities are up and running, and the staff is training on using them, including the new Polaris library system. Hold books, if you put a book on hold electronically, you can pick up and deliver if we have the holdings there. The library's not open, but staff can be able to assist at the front. So if you have a book on hold, we're dropping one back off, we are open for that limited perks. There's a really great space. I try to stop in once a week and also meet with the director, get an update once a week, have some talks with administration. It's going to be a great addition to the core of our town. The opening is still up in the air, and we're dependent on finishing the moving, so no guessing or estimating when our library's going to return to full service. That's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Council member Poston.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jason Stoney, I'm the Chair of the Recreation and Arts Committee. Within that, it includes the work of the Department of Community Services. So in the Halloween spirit, we have the Halloween Festival and costume parade coming up on Sunday, October 27th, just the Q Day for the Truck or Treat. This will be from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Community Center. There'll be music, dancing, bounce house, crafts, and refreshments, a Halloween parade with prizes for the best costumes, Halloween safety tips, giveaways, and more. So plenty of fun for the kiddos in town to come out and enjoy Halloween, as well as the normal poor kids at heart, camp enthusiasts. So I imagine it'll be a good time. And also just want to give a couple of kudos to some of the commissions that I'm liaising to. First up is the Arts Commission, held the highly successful poetry festival about two weekends ago. So hats off to them, a great turnout, great night. And then equally impressive, the Circle Commission, put on an Indigenous Peoples' Day history talk, which was held just last night. And this was something that I was able to announce earlier, because the logistics didn't get finalized until closer to the last minute, but they pulled it off. It was a great talk by Claire Germain on Native American participation representation work. And as I showed notice, there was a ton of people that were interested. So it'll be more interesting programming to come, so keep an eye on. And I'll be sure to announce the future Circle Commission events. And that's it for my report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Council member Kim Cho Han.
Just a quick announcement, the Right Control Board will be meeting October 30th at 5:30 p.m. here in council chambers. I'm sorry, I didn't announce my name for Zoom at home. My name is Asa Kim Cho Han, and I chair Finance. And I also wanted to, today, this afternoon, I attended the DeeDees ribbon cutting and opening with some of my colleagues. I'm sure they will mention that as well. Great addition to our downtown, so welcome. Wish you much success. Also, I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween. Looking forward to all the trick-or-treaters coming by our house in our downtown. Also, I just wanted to say that we have a few new businesses that opened and many that we've mentioned and I've noticed in our town group that it's been a lot of critiquing of our new businesses, but they are new and they have hurdles, and we just should be a little patient and kind with some of our new businesses in town. So let's just keep that in mind. You know, we're all going through the motions, and as hard as everyone here on this day is works to fill these stores, we are smashed sandwiched in between New Brunswick and Edison, and we're still pulling in these new businesses. So as far as the Super Fresh and DeeDees, and these are brand-new businesses that's just trying to serve us residents as best as they can. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Council member Hale.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. My name is Matt Hale, and I chair the Economic Development Committee. And I just want to second my colleague, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, encouraging people to do business, do businesses, a little time to get up and running. As she said, Mayor, Council President Hirsch, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, and I all attended the ribbon cutting for DeeDees Pizza, the new coolest soon-to-be institution pizza place in Highland Park. Doug Yona brought his whole family, and we're very excited that DeeDees is part of the Highland Park family. Last week, I was able to attend the Middlesex County Business Summit, where among others, we heard from Governor Murphy, but also got a chance to talk and meet with many business government leaders from around the county. But the coolest thing I learned is that, did you know that one of the companies that is moving into the new Keelis building, Nokia Bell Labs, is conceptualizing and building the first cellular telephone network for the moon? Literally, they're figuring out how to talk to you on the moon. I don't know how you talk in some places in South Jersey on the cellphone, but in the moon, you're going to have a cellphone tower built by people right across in the greatest suburb of Highland Park, New Brunswick. So we got a chance to talk to the Nokia folks and let them know all about Highland Park, and hopefully they will have many of the residents come over, not just for lunch and dinner, but we've got places for them to stay. So that was exciting. Just real quick, tonight, we're going to be bringing forward an amended redevelopment plan for tracks A through D. I know that generally, this sounds like a significant agenda. I really want to just point out that this is really an attempt to consolidate and bring together all of the things that we've done in track A through D, but primarily track C, which is the farmer's market lot, over the last quarter, last year or so. We've always anticipated that the original redevelopment plan was going to be amended and changed as the project moved forward. And we're really excited about some of the different things that are coming into this new redevelopment plan. All of them have been talked about in a series of community conversations, the big meeting in June, where we really sort of came together, I think, as a community to figure out how this new development, particularly track C, is going to reflect the best of Highland Park. So the document talks about different ways of breaking up the buildings so that it fits with the community, talks about public access to and complements the pedestrian plaza on Third Street. And really, I think outlines a vision that not just the council and the mayor, but also the community has for these new redevelopments. So it's an exciting part of a conversation, it's going to be one that continues as we go along in the future. Really, this document is just sort of to update the existing redevelopment with all the things that we've been working on. I wanted to give a huge shout out to our planner, Chris Cassenza, who did the yeoman's job of putting all of this together and putting it into this new plan. It's an enormous level of detail work, along with also he updated our zoning map as well. It's sort of a really in-the-weeds kind of work, and Chris did a fantastic job of that, so I wanted to give him a shout out. And so finally, I'll just end with, as many of you know, I'm a lifelong Boston Red Sox fan, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the Mets and Yankees fans for slapping me on the shoulder to let me know how terrible the Red Sox are and how wonderful the Mets and Yankees are. But seriously, congratulations to them. Maybe we'll have a Subway series. I really, really appreciate all of the joy he's given me. Thank you very much. That's all I have tonight.
Council member Canavera.
Thank you, Mayor. Chair of Canavera, Chair for the Health and Human Services Commission, Committee. On a personal note, I want to thank all our residents who have decorated for Halloween. My grandson and I enjoy going out every night and looking at all the beautiful decorations, so thank you. The Commission for Universal Access wants everybody to know that October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month. During the month, we celebrate the value and talent that workers with disabilities add to America's workplaces and the economy. The purpose is to confirm our commitment to ensuring disabled workers have access to good jobs every month of every year. The community food pantry is open on the second and fourth Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 10:45 a.m., and again, 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the Saturday following the Thursday from 9:30 to 10:00 a.m. The Highland Park Gizzard Food Pantry is open every Tuesday and Wednesday at Zone 16 Center from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And most importantly, the Mental Health Commission reminds you that if you or someone you know is in crisis, please reach out for help. Call the lifeline at 988 or text H O M E to 741741. Both are 24/7 access and free and confidential. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll say something about the Red Sox in a minute. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Public Works Committee. It's really nice to see so many people here tonight. I did just want to mention that it is after 5:00 p.m., but I do believe the registration is open till midnight. However, today is the last day to register to vote for the November 4th general elections. Obviously, we have presidential, congressional, county, and local races happening. The world needs to hear Highland Park and know that we're tuned in and taking control. You can check your registration status online at nj.gov forward slash state forward slash elections forward slash public. But if you go to nj.gov forward slash state, you will see a button that can take you to that voting portal. So if it is too late to register online, which I do not believe it is, but you can check your voter registration status, know your polling place, obviously you'll receive all of that information in the mail as well. As liaison to the Public Works Committee, I am the liaison to Sustainable Jersey, Sustainable Highland Park here in town. And we have a series of community cleanouts coming up. If you're tired of seeing trash on the streets and sidewalks, parks, and other natural areas, especially when the wind picks up, like we see, so are we. And we do everything that we can, but also we rely heavily on volunteers as well, and Sustainable Highland Park, working closely with the, excuse me, the Highland Park Ecology and Environmental Group, work to do weekly trash cleanups on Saturdays and Sundays. The next cleanup will take place Sunday, October 20th, meet at River Road, meet at River Road near the Environmental Education Center at 10:00 a.m. You're actually going to meet in the parking lot of River Road near the bottom of Harrison Avenue. So that's 10:00 a.m. to noon. There will be another cleanup in gloves, other materials will be provided so you do not have to come with anything except your willingness to work. There are scheduled additional cleanups taking place Saturday, November 2nd, Sunday, November 17th, Saturday, November 7th. Dates and times to be determined, and I'll leave some contact information when I'm done with this portion. Sustainable Highland Park also oversees our adopted drain program. And basically, what that is, is that you can put your name on a storm drain that is in your neighborhood or your street, and you can just be, you can take the responsibility among yourself to make sure that brush and other detritus is clear from those storm drains. Even with the street sweeper, which I'll pour that out in just a bit, obviously leaves, pine needles, and other debris can get stuck in those drains. So if you adopt a drain, you'll know that your street, your street storm drains are free and clear. Other sustainable use and events, I just wanted to thank volunteer Andy Warren, who gave a guided tour of the Mary Denver Native Plant Sanctuary on October 6th. The sanctuary is a two-acre park along the tidal part of the Raritan River. I was unable to attend this one, unfortunately, but all reports indicated it was a great success. And then keep a lookout for these exciting events at the Environmental Education Center at 50th River Road. On Sunday, October 20th, at the Environmental Center, there will be a free native plant giveaway, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then native plant sanctuary planting during that time at noon. The next Sustainable Highland Park meeting will take place Wednesday, October 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. For more information, to learn more about raking the weed, if you need to rake the leaves off your lawn, what some of the options are there, would you like a self-guided tour of our rain gardens in town, go to sustainablehighlandpark.org. That's sustainablehighlandpark.org, and that will have more information as well about the community cleanouts. Public Works, just a few updates here. Leaf bags, this came up at the last meeting. A reminder that the distribution of biodegradable leaf bags started today, October 15th. The borough provides 20 bags per resident. The bags can be picked up at the Public Works Department located at 444 Valentine Avenue, right here at the bottom of the hill, Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you to everybody who participated in our bulk trash pickup program. We have two special pickups after the Tammy White garage sale. And I did just want to report that 65 tons of bulk trash were collected and delivered to the Middlesex County landfill during that seven-day span, and the year-to-date is 146 tons. So considerable amount. Sustainable Highland Park also has some suggestions on, you know, obviously, there's going to be some bulk items that need to be left out on the curb. They are not usable anymore, and we need to get them out of your house. However, there could be opportunities to find ways to repurpose some of those items. In addition to just leaving them out, we have a storied tradition of collecting other people's gently-used things on the sidewalk. But if you're interested in finding other ways to recycle or repurpose or to donate those items, sustainablehighlandpark.org can help you with that as well. Just a quick update, because we haven't talked about it in a while. We received state funding a few years ago to do an exploration of a riverfront, of a river trail, connector trail that connects Johnson and McDonald's Parks. And currently, right now, there's an easement back there, as many of us are familiar with. The borough is currently doing preliminary legwork and exploring the concept of a river trail connector, and there is ongoing coordination with agencies, there's meetings with Soil Conservation Districts of Middlesex County, have been holding ongoing coordination with NJDEP and the DOT. The consultant is out doing property boundary surveys and additional survey work starting this week, as well as environmental assessments. So this is a multi-year process. Residents are engaged, informed, and aware, and this could be a wonderful public infrastructure project done properly. Sorry, I know this is going a little long. Just the Veterans' Day Parade is Monday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m. Please mark your calendars. And once again, the borough is working with the Veterans Alliance of Raritan Valley on our annual parade. It will start this year in New Brunswick in Highland Park at the Del Boy right across from DeeDees Pizza. And please stay tuned for that. I wanted to echo the DeeDees. I've eaten so much pizza in the last week, it's ridiculous, and so I do have to pace myself a little bit. And I did just want to say, let's go Mets, to conclude things, because we are in the national championship series. I have nothing but respect for the Red Sox, who have had a long, who've struggled mightily for a long time too. But I did just want to say, when I watch baseball, and I think a lot of us do, we understand that the beauty of the sport is deliberate. rule-based, strategizing, slow and steady, 162 games, nine innings, 27 odds, and keeping that eye on the prize. And I think that is applicable to a lot of the work that we do up here and what, what we do as a community. And we can make adjustments. This is an extremely different Mets team than we saw in May, so we can make adjustments. We can, we can think on the fly. And we can, we can, we can see what works and what is, and what, and what might not, and what might, and what needs improvement, and we can make those changes. And we can get to the World Series, and we can win. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Borough Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Terry O'Vair, Borough Administrator. I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilmember Hale mentioned. We do have on the agenda tonight the amendment to the downtown redevelopment plan, Tract A and D. I thought I'd just go over the process a little bit following introductions evening, assuming council finds in favor moving forward. It will be referred, and there is a resolution on the agenda, referring the draft to the planning board for its review for consistency with the master plan. I believe it's tracking toward their meeting in November. I don't have it to date off the top of my head. After which, they made a determination that's not inconsistent, otherwise known as consistent with the master plan. It will then be referred back to the Borough Council for a vote and a public hearing first at the December meeting. So I just wanted to kind of walk the public through those, those steps, through this process. Our very talented colleague, Chris Cessenza, will be presenting an overview to the planning board at their meeting, kind of going into some of the key changes in the plan. But again, I would just emphasize the fact that while we did make some changes to the order and structure of the plan, the most substantive changes were with respect to Tract C, to try to put the regulations into effect that would effectuate the kind of building that we presented at the June meeting and we discussed at previous meetings. So we get the outcomes we're looking for. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew where this project's going. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like me to vote with the quorum, Rose? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Please be advised that we have implemented a new set of procedures on how to conduct council meetings. The mayor runs the meeting, and anyone will have an opportunity to speak. As you can see from today's agenda and the packet, we have three opportunities when publicly participating. The first opportunity for public participation is after the mayor's report, and that will be on your agenda, number 10. It's time to ask questions about the resolutions and ordinances that are up for vote on today's agenda. Any questions or comments will be placed on the record, and the public portion will be closed. Once the public portion is closed, the mayor will respond to the question or direct a member from the governing body or any director that is present to respond to the public's inquiries. The public cannot speak once the public portion is closed. The second opportunity tonight for the public to have any comment is that we have an ordinance that's on for second reading. Members can come up, other members of the public can come up, and also obviously, today, live online, make their comment about the ordinance. And then, once the comments are heard, public question will be closed again, and the mayor will respond or direct a member from the governing body or directors to respond to the inquiry. And that will be for your agenda, number 11A. Moving forward, right after the appointments in today's agenda, it will be number 15 on your agenda. There will be a vote for, right before that, for consent agenda. So it will be a third opportunity for public participation. The public, at this time, may ask a question or make a comment on any topic. Once all the members of the public are heard in person and be assumed, the public portion will be closed. Once the public portion is closed, no one from the public will be able to comment. The mayor then will respond or direct anyone else from the audience to respond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now it's time for the mayor's report. Mine is really brief and short. I want to thank everyone for coming out, especially for Judge Hoffman. He was an awesome person and did a lot of great work for our town and made sure that we were taken care of, especially in the public safety realm. Speaking of public safety, as the weather is changing, it's getting darker, and the leaves are falling, and it's harder to navigate. I'm just, I requested that everyone please utilize the sidewalk where there is sidewalk to keep us all safe. Last week, we had a session by Urban School, and it was called Bringing Local Government to the Community. These are series that we want to continue as to reach the folks who cannot make it to council meetings to bring our, bring us to you into local neighborhoods. So last week, we did a by-urban, which is called the 11th district. We're going to be doing much more outreach to various other communities to stay tuned. Some of the questions that brought up, a lot of people wanted to know what's going on with the DOT and Route 27. That's continuous work. We are continually working on trying to do the road diet on Route 27, trying to do some things that we can do now to avoid the accidents that we have seen. So we're continuing to work on the desperate safety route 27. All of those are ongoing projects. There are some things that we can do in the interim, which we will do. But the, the, the dying share of the project is going to take a few years, so please stay posted. What we will do from this community session, we will have a column on the website where you see the questions that was asked in those, the forums, and then you can see what the answers are or if it's to be determined or to be continued. If we don't have all the answers, we'll say that too as well. So that was good. The other thing that I have been getting a lot of emails about is the scooters. A lot of people do not write the scooters on the sidewalk, and I agree, they should not be on the sidewalk, or they should, when you're finished using your scooter, please put them to the curb, not in the middle of the sidewalk where people cannot get around. It's becoming a hazard, and people really, let's be good steward to each other. Let's be good neighbors and not leave those scooters in the middle of, in the sidewalk where people cannot have access to. That's pretty much my report. For all those who are celebrating the Jewish holidays, Happy New Year to you all. Thank you. With that said, it's now time for public participation. A total of 20, a total of 20 minutes, 21 minutes, three minutes per speaker, limited to items on this agenda. Comments from the members of, members of public attended in person will be heard first, followed by members attending by Zoom. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, your name and address. Thank you.
Mary Blatino, 701 Madison. Regarding Resolution 1024 to 41, council support for a third permit for a marijuana store? Please vote no. This is actually marijuana trafficking, and I use that word because that is the federal designation for marijuana sales and distribution, which remains completely federally illegal. For those who may not be aware, Highland Park Council has ordinance for six marijuana stores to sell very potent THC recreational marijuana products, and none of these products are approved by the FDA. Council has also ordinance for marijuana consumption lounges and an unlimited number of marijuana dispatch offices. None of these locations has any buffer from our schools, parks, playgrounds, houses of worship, or anyone's home. Sal Raspa, Raspa Jewelers, and Teddy Pardo, a former Highland Park police officer, have chosen to be partners together in a marijuana store. But council has a choice tonight also. You can prevent them from selling marijuana in Highland Park, especially where kids walk by every day. This is the choice each of you has tonight. Please vote no. Dale Middler's son, Stephen, is another example of who council has approved to be involved in selling marijuana in Highland Park at a location only a few steps away from Carcy Park and Irving School. For those of you who share these concerns about marijuana stores up and down Raritan and Wickerjavenus, please feel free to contact me at mbotton@verizon.net. Please also know that our lawsuit on these issues is fully active and is going forward, and we are very grateful for that. Again, please vote no on Sal Raspa and Teddy Pardo's pot shop. Thank you. I also have a quick question, if you could answer that, regarding the amended redevelopment plan that we're papers tonight. It says on several pages, it refers to current and existing. Can you explain what is the difference between current and existing? And does existing actually refer to what is proposed in the plan tonight? And if it is actually what is proposed, that's really how the language should appear as opposed to existing. That makes it sound like the vote has already gone through and that these items are already in place. If you could clarify that, and that would be my suggestion if it really is proposed. Thank you so much.
My name is Colleen Tatter. I'm at 142 North Sixth Avenue in Highland Park. I want to start off by just noticing how many wonderful things council and mayor have done for Highland Park, given this meeting alone. It's a long list of really great things that help the community and benefit everyone in the community. That's why I, why I'm here tonight is to commend all of those great things that have been done and all those decisions that have been made by the borough and mayor. In contrast, I want to follow up with Mayor's protest against voting for 1024 to 41, which authorizes the third permit of a marijuana dispensary in our town. There, these dispensaries, this is the third one that the borough has supported and welcomed into our town. What is the need for these? Does town need these? Does it make our lives better? Who's using these? These are all questions that are very important. When we look to our new grocery store, everybody in town benefits from that. There's, there's no doubt about that. On the other hand, there's just no clear reason why we should have all these marijuana dispensaries. There's just no reason for it. Our town doesn't need it. Certainly, our children should not have that as a model for that message. They grow up and pass five of them every day. So it's very exciting that the council and mayor, and not only this council, a former council and a former mayor, have made these decisions on behalf of the residents who have not voted. We have not voted. Yes, go ahead. With six marijuana shops in our town, we're all for it. You will not find that because the residents have not been considered. Their voices have not been heard. This is all on council and mayor making these decisions regardless of what people in town want. So it's very exciting, and I urge you to rethink if it's good for this town and to not vote to give a permit for the third pot shop. It's basically what I see as a normalization of pot in our community. I saw a representative, one of the developers, in farmers markets, set up in the farmers market. Why someone would be in the farmers market, a business that sells products to 41 adults, people, why would they be in the farmers market? There is a normalization, I feel, going on in the town to make marijuana a part of our culture, and I think that's really the mistake.
Please state your name and address for the red.
My name is Lisa Boroday.
Come closer to the microphone, that's a bit more.
Yes, Boroday. For 29 South 7. So I'd like to talk about this marijuana. I want to ask everybody to vote for no pot shops in Highland Park. Can you vote right now if no pot shops? Can you raise your hand if you're against pot shops? Somebody here? Thank you. You too? Okay, how about council meetings? Against pot shop? Can you raise our hands? Not yet. All right, so thank you. Maybe it's good progress. Thank you.
Hi, I was living North Second Avenue. On the same subject, what are the chances, since this is consent agenda for the dispensary, why not separate? I asked that you separated, and we hear each councilperson's vote. That's question number one on Route 10, the dispensary. And on what the mayor reported, last week, your work session, the safety experts were there. Was, did anyone ask if non-chargable lithium batteries explode and how you put the fire out? I'll hear the answer later, right?
Any one else? Yes, Mayor, thanks. Looks like first up is Carl Prey. Please state your name for the record, please.
Hello? Mary Forsberg. I, today, this afternoon, just read the 130 report on the redevelopment that includes some new information that you have never reported, which I had already, about the assessments and, and the, and the owners of the various properties for Tracts A through D. I, I actually think this is a really useful report that met, that everybody in Highland Park should read because it tells you where the town is going. You see pictures of things that do not look like Highland Park. And the question that I have, and I think a lot of people have, is we, you can, you can now calculate how much money we make from the various assessments of these properties, which I calculate is about $350,000 in property taxes from the various properties from A through D. And I would like to know, and, you know, we also know that you've given away two pilots, to River Road and to the, our new grocery store. I like our new grocery store, okay. And you think that somebody's going to build a landmark building where Charlie Brown's and Mr. Pie's office is, and you've not given up the idea of a, of a multi-story parking garage. I would really like to see a cost-benefit analysis of this plan. How much money are you going to lose? And how much are you going to give away in pilots? And how much you think we will gain from them? I, myself, am not impressed with the pictures. I hope those do not reflect what the future is going to be for Highland Park. But I'm, I, I, I think this report is definitely something that people should read. I also have an, have an issue about Resolution 102439, 239, which is the grant for $1 million for the closing South Third. I was told by, I think it was a councilperson who told me it was a federal grant, $1 million. And it appears to me in this paperwork that it is a state grant from the Department of Community Affairs. So I would like to know, I would like to know which councilperson, which, which legislator sponsored, sponsored that grant. And it says in the grant that it is to replace aging public by, by, aging public works equipment. I mean, what aging public works equipment is on South Third? I'd like to know exactly what's going to be replaced. And I'd like to know who sponsored a $1 million grant from the Department of Community Affairs to reconfigure South Third.
Anyone else there? Sal Baptist, you're up next. Please state your name for the record, please.
Sal Baptist, on Raritan Avenue. So I would also like to... So I would also like to express my opposition to yet another cannabis business license. At the last meeting, I asked, since the point was made, the meeting before that, that 70% of Highland Park residents voted to decriminalize marijuana. And that was given as justification for handing out cannabis business licenses like candy. I asked, you know, were we ever actually given the chance to say how many business licenses we thought should be appropriate for cannabis businesses for a town the size of Highland Park? My question was not even addressed, so I would like to re-ask, you know, when do we get to weigh in on this other than by repeatedly zooming into council meetings and asking questions? And also, given that it was mentioned that October is, you know, Disabled Jobs Awareness Month. I have a disability. I have asthma. I am severely allergic to marijuana smoke. Both sides of Raritan Avenue have become pretty much impassable to me, especially now that there's two cannabis businesses going to be operating on either side. The code, the Highland Park code, provides that no one should be smoking or consuming the cannabis products outside. This is, as far as I can tell, never been enforced. So it's a good thing that I, you know, don't even have a job in Highland Park anymore because I would not be able to work it. You know, I would not be able to go to it. So thanks for your disabled jobs awareness. Thanks.
Terry, anyone else? I do have another hand up, but it's someone who's spoken previously. I believe we have six minutes left, so it's okay. Mary Forsberg?
Hi, I have a comment again on the report about the redevelopment. One of the things that I thought was really interesting in the report, it looked about, I mean, this is sort of in, anyway, it looked at permitted principal uses for the spaces in A, B, C, and D. And it had a very, very long list of things that were permitted, among them, which is axe throwing, which I know that our planner, Mr. Whatever, Constantine, really liked, which is axe throwing. But I thought it was really interesting that in no place is cannabis shops listed as a permitted use. I thought that was really interesting, and I think it's sort of in keeping with, you know, what people have been saying about their unhappiness with having the potential for six cannabis shops in Highland Park. Thank you.
Anyone else there? No, Mayor, but I'd like to state, just as I usually do, we have six attendees at home.
Right, seeing that there's no one else, may I have a motion to close public session? So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Cannavaro.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chulha.
Yes.
Councilman Mupasthoni.
Yes.
Just quickly, the council will be taking a vote tonight on the marijuana that a few questions came in on. So the council will make a decision in a few minutes as we go through the agenda. But Terry, can you just talk, we're going to be talking about the redevelopment plan that we're looking at. And the question came up about the extent, the redevelopment plan as it is. And why are we doing any kind of adjustment? Do you want to speak about that, Mayor?
I'll try to, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, there were a couple different questions raised, but I guess one clarification I'd like to make based on some of the comments were that what is being considered this evening is an amendment to an existing plan, the downtown redevelopment plan that we passed in 2021 for tracks A and D. So this isn't a brand-new thing. That said, we have made some headway on various aspects of implementation, most notably track C. And so where, as I indicated, and as Councilmember Hale indicated earlier, the majority of the edits were made with respect to what is the allowable zoning for track C because we know a lot more about how that building may look and feel based on the input session we had in June, as well as follow-up meetings. So that's, I just want to make that, I guess, re-clarify that point. This isn't a brand-new study. We did reorganize some material to make it easier to understand, as well as we anticipate additional amendments in the future once we get a little closer on final concepts for track A and any of the other tracks that are included in this plan. So I just want to make that point as a kind of a general context for everything from there. I believe there was a question regarding the current and existing zoning references in the plan. I'm not 100% sure. I know the reference that was being made. But we do, as a matter of course, in all of our redevelopment plans, indicate the underlying zoning as if the plan wasn't there. And then we also articulate the new proposed zoning for the site as a result of this plan. So that's the, but I will take a look at that language to make sure that is clear, if it needs some clarification. I don't think that's a substantial change if we need to make a minor word choice there. Looking at, there was a question about cost-benefit to the plan and the assessed values. I believe there was, each property was there. I can't swear on the original version if all of the assessed values were there, but I believe that's a standard component in our plans, at least since we adopted this originally. And that's why we included that. And if a pilot is going to be entertained for the track C project, certainly we'll have to understand the economics of the project, why a pilot's required to make the project happen. And again, I'd just like to point out that part of the intention of the plan is to make sure that we're not only doing better on the assessed values, the taxable value of these properties, which by the way, when you do a pilot, you don't do worse. And the other side of that is to, it's kind of incentive, not incentive, but jumpstart investment throughout town and in the downtown area, which will have kind of ancillary benefits outside of budget boundaries. But there'll be a lot more to discuss when we get to the point of a financial agreement, and we're just not there. South Third?
There was a question about the grant.
I think there might be some confusion. There are two resolutions on the agenda. I believe the 1024-239 is for the South Third Plaza Design Construction Grant, which we did get from, it's essentially a legislative grant, but once it's been awarded, it comes through the Department of Community Affairs. And they require this resolution to come into place so that we can get to the agreement. So the requests were made to our legislators, and then it gets handed over to the DCA, who manages a lot of grants for the state of New Jersey. And then there's another grant, 1024-238, same legislative, but a different pot. Within there, they have different categories of grant for $250,000 toward a new garbage truck, which if you've experienced any of the derails in the last three months due to downed garbage trucks and so forth, you recognize me, so. So there are two resolutions, same format, same agency, DCA, but slightly different.
Okay, ordinance requiring second reading. Please report on ordinance number 24-2096.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 230-124 zoning map and 230-4 attachment 4. In order to update the zoning map within the Borough of Highland Park, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavit to publication on file.
Now, it's time for a public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak on this ordinance, please come up to the microphone or use the raise hand button on soon.
Hi, Lois, North Second Avenue. I wrote my save the Rutgers Ecological Preserve from 1988. I looked at the zoning map, the section you're talking about, and I didn't see single-family housing. Has that been changed? Has that been eradicated? Has anyone heard from Rutgers? I didn't have time to look through, as Mary Forsberg had time to look through the whole hundreds of pages. I wondered, classic cleaners, track A, has gone from no condemnation in the first plan to eminent domain to condemnation in July. And I didn't see much happening here for the owner. But I spoke to the owners, a few.
It's a separate item, just, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is a separate item.
It's something, right? Is that the zoning, zoning map? I'm talking about the zoning map.
We're speaking about a specific area of the zoning map.
Well, track A, but I can't speak on the next question. So they've never received anything from Borough Hall, the owner told me today. Now, I don't know if they're supposed to be looking for eminent domain. Is what, three parcels are averaged together?
It's a totally different. With all due respect, Lois, what you're talking about, classic cleaners, is not on this particular item that we're doing the second reading on.
On the update of the zoning map, it's not where they're.
It's not on this particular, that we're going to go down next.
Okay.
You can come up when we have the next open public session, and you can speak to that, but not at this time.
Okay, now the Rutgers Preserve disappeared from the map. Today's new map, color map that I got, nice edge to large size, it went from housing, single-family, to not. Is that not part of this amendment of the zoning map that I purchased today in a big packet?
I don't know what you purchased today, but we're talking about, I don't know what happened in 1988, wasn't here. And I don't know what you're referring to. We're talking about this particular ordinance. I'm not sure what happened in 1988 in housing and zoning.
No, but your new, your one-year-old map shows Rutgers being single-family housing on the zoning map or in the zoning book on the pages and pages. Now, the new one, I see no delineations, just conservation and recreation, thank you. But are you amending the entire zoning map? Then this, my question is, did the housing, single-family housing on the preserve disappear? Please. Okay, you'll answer later. Thank you.
Terry?
Can you?
I wonder if there are other.
Oh, there are others. Oh, I'm sorry, there are other people. Okay, so I'll hold off on the zoning map question. Anyone else wish to speak about the second reading of this particular ordinance, 24-2096?
Yes, I see a hand up. Mary Forsberg? Oh. I think maybe they took their hand down. Okay. Hello? Oh, shoot.
Yes.
Okay, you should be able to speak again, Mary. Unmute yourself. Mary, if you wish to speak, please do so now. I think it was a.
I'm sorry. Now I'm going to ask you to elaborate a little bit more about this particular one. Hopefully clear.
Maybe Sopra can back me up on this one too, but essentially.
Oh, before we do that, let me follow my own rule of order. Seeing that there's no more questions, may I have a motion to close public session on ordinance number 24-2096?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Cannavaro.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Mew.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chulha.
Yes.
Councilman Mupasthoni.
Yes.
Now. Terry, you want to go first, or I?
No, I feel for her.
Aburitani?
Okay, thank you. So what ends up happening is that when we first tried to figure this out, we noticed that in the code, it was a 2019 map that was attached to 4H. So anything that was done before 2019 had been preserved in that map. Anything after that had not been recorded in their zoning maps. So anything from 2019 forward is what we are updating. And when I say updating, meaning there's already been notice that was given to the planning board and everyone else. But what ends up happening is the different redevelopment projects, they were not reflected in it. And as you can notice, the plan did an excellent job. The old blocks and blocks have been transformed into what they are currently, because tax assessors always change it with current times. So while I understand that people might be asking for specific projects that may have happened pre-2019, I have no issues in looking into it after the meeting and finding out what happened with that plan. If that helps.
Councilmember Hale, you had wanted to add?
Yeah, I was just going to add that the zoning map that is reflected in this ordinance and the zoning map moving forward is what our planner went back and found within our records to say those changes were made prior to 2019. So this is the most up-to-date, most reflective map of all of the things that have been done, going back as far as we can find. It's incredibly detailed, exhausting work that he did to sort of update this and make sure that it reflected all of the previous decisions that previous councils have made going backwards, so.
Any additional comments from members of the council?
No, I guess, I was just, if you don't mind, I just, the way I would think about it is this does what both Ms. Shaw and Councilmember Laurail said. We had new things that weren't reflected on the 2019 plan that actually had already been taken by council. For example, certain redevelopment plans up in Raritan, being one of the more recent ones, are now reflected on the zoning map. But there were also, we discovered amendments to our code that took place in 2004, one of which impacts the conservation and recreation zone that I believe Ms. Levinge was referring to. While the code was in place, the map didn't reflect it. So this action is just having the map match the code that's on the book. As to what's allowed in the conservation and recreation zone, we can talk about that off-size like Ms. Shaw mentioned. This is not any policy direction. This is an update to a map so that the map matches what's on the books. I guess I just took my shot at explaining.
I think that's the best I can do. Okay, now, council members, may I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number 24-2096?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Cannavaro.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes, congratulations, Terry and Chris and everyone who's working on this.
Councilwoman Kim Chulha.
Yes.
And Councilman Mupasthoni.
Yes.
Ordinance requiring first reading. Please report on introduction of ordinance number 24-2097.
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the downtown redevelopment plan for tracks A through D has been introduced by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number 24-2097, authorizing publication as required by law and set up public hearing for November 12, 2024?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Cannavaro.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chulha.
Yes.
Councilman Mupasthoni.
Yes.
And now we move on to the consent agenda. May I ask of any council member, is there anything that you would like to quote or table from this thing or separate out from this consent agenda?
Not for me. No, Mayor.
No.
No.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, 13A through 13G?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonic?
I'd just like to briefly note that, uh, I'd like to, uh, extend gratitude to our legislative delegation for helping secure the funding for South Third. I very much look forward to that plaza being opened up. They will be a great gathering space for our community, help promote affordability, and just make it overall more vibrant downtown. So, I'm very much looking forward to that. Thank you for their support, and I hope yes.
Uh, now it's time for appointments. Tonight, we're appointing Crossing Guard Teresa Fox and Sustainable Highland Park Cherie's niece Todd. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second. Roca?
Councilwoman Canavera? Yes, and thank you for all of our work from our crossing guards and our volunteers in town. Councilwoman George?
I, I thank and welcome Cherie's niece Todd to Sustainable, I hope yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
So, we had to check on Cherie to make sure she wasn't already a member, because she's already been volunteer and active on the, uh, committee.
Been going for a long time.
Right, so this is just official, uh, and congratulations to her, and we have, um, thanks to our crossing guards, who receive every day, off my kids' value every day, and thank you so much.
That's not a yes?
Is it a yes?
Yeah, of course.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yeah.
Councilman Pistonic?
Yes.
Okay. Now it's time for the second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject to include by 9pm. Comments from members of the public attending this meeting in person will be heard first, followed by members attended by Zoom. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone if you may.
Lois, North Second. Okay, I'm gonna try again. Now, nowhere in the legend matches single-family houses on the Rutgers Preserve. In this brand-new, unapproved-y map I purchased today. I didn't purchase, I got a new one. But it's not passed yet. So, is this correct? Okay, no answers. Um. Track A, we'll go back to that. Classic Cleaners has not heard from Highland Park. I don't know if this is a matter of my two faxes disappearing, or problems at the attorney's office, or if some notification for eminent domain or for condemnation or from comment from the owners would come from LRK, would come from the planning board, would come from the attorney's office, would come from Realtors, as Ubrees was approached, I'm told, by a Realtor from Jersey City. So, how are owners notified? How are they supposed to respond if they never notified? Unless, of course, the office, the small office lost something. So, so I told them, they graduated from non-condemnation in the first plan to eminent domain, which I thought, that's when the borough brings three comparable properties, and says, we, we want, or the developer, we want to purchase your property, and that was July, and again, under condemnation, and they have heard nothing from Highland Park. That's how I asked the question of the owner. Have you heard from Highland Park on your property? No, was the answer. And we, they answered, we usually get a copy from the attorney of whatever is the problem or is going on. So, that was my question, and I didn't have time to look at Track D, but I find it amazing that Sunoco and B Big might be under condemnation, perhaps, with the study, and yet, granted, I, I'd like to know if there's anything cooking with Track D, because that was put on hold how many years ago? And, and they might come along and do, the owner, might do something, and yet, all we hear is the other ones are being pushed forward, the other tracks, I will see us moving quickly, is this favoritism? Thank you.
Sorry, anyone? Yes, mayor, there are some hands up. Uh, first hand up, Mary Forsberg?
Uh, Mary. Mary Forsberg, Denison Street. Um, I was interested in Terry's response to my question about 1024-239, about the $1 million grant that was given to Highland Park, um, that I was told came from Senator Pallone, and apparently, according to 1024-239, it's a state grant. I'd like to know what legislature, legislator, um, sponsored that? Because I worked in Trenton for 25 years, and I know legislators like their names on things that look good. This grant talks about replacing aging public works equipment, but, um, it's 1024-239, not 1024-238. So, there is some, some, something kind of wrong in the explanation that, um, that Terry provided. I also, um, I don't, I don't think that you are taking seriously enough the consequences of, um, the, uh, the redevelopment of downtown, and you really need to be doing not only a cost-benefit analysis, trying to figure out who would be willing to really and truly invest money without a huge pilot, um, in Highland Park. Who is going to build a landmark building? Um, I just find this whole thing really quite disturbing. Um, and I'd also like to have a, an honest explanation of what is going on with Ubrees. I have no problem with Ubrees moving to another location, but if it's gonna cost somebody money, it should not be taxpayers in Highland Park, it should be the developer. And I, I read a couple times, you know, the agreement about Ubrees and the place out on Woodbridge Avenue, and frankly, I don't understand why Highland Park, what it looks to me like is investing in property. Um, and we know that Highland Park owns property, which I really, from past experience, should not be happening now. Um, Highland Park bought, um, property on South Third, but we can't afford to buy a new garbage truck? Frankly, you know, garbage collection in Highland Park is one of the most important things that I think this town does, and they do a very good. So, I'd like, I would like an actual explanation of these things.
Is anyone else? Uh, Sal Baptist, you're up next. Please state your name to the record, please.
Uh, excuse me, Sal Baptist, Raritan Avenue. Um, I am wondering what it will take. I mean, you heard from half a dozen people expressing, you know, reservations about the cannabis licenses, and you just brushed this all off. Um, where is the democracy? I, I mean, you know, do you not care what residents think? I mean, several of us have been somewhat too very vocal about our opposition to this, and yet, you just steamroller right over it. This does not seem like a good way to run a municipal government. Um, also, uh, I would like to point out the, that the, uh, resolution, uh, 238 and the resolution 239 both say to replace aging public works equipment. I don't know if that's bad editing, um, but it's not confusion on Mary Forsberg's part. It literally does say in the, uh, agenda to replace public works equipment. Um, and I would also like to, um, congratulate, you know, our new crossing guard. I am very in favor of the Highland Park crossing guards. I think they're great. Um, and I would like to see them continue being appointed by Highland Park Borough, um, instead of being farmed out to some private company. Uh, so, any updates on that front would be appreciated. Thank you.
Do you want to, is it any, mayor, have a?
My, wait, wait.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, I have a question to, uh, I'm still panicking. I have a question. Um, I live in the, in this town, and we know that it's a town with a dog park, dog park, with many dogs are here, it's fine, pet lovers, cat lovers, dogs lovers. I have a question. Um, who should have, who should have a right to cross first and dog and people meeting together, going toward each other? What is your best guess? Who would, who should give a way? To whom? Dogs have to go first, or the people has to go first, when they're meeting on the sidewalk? When they're going toward each other? But this is a dog town. This is a dog city, right? So, we need to know that. Can I have an answer for this? From somebody from council?
You may not miss what we said earlier, that we'll gather all the questions, and then, when this section is closed, we'll answer questions.
At the end, right?
Just, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, we have, um, Michelle Resiopi. Please confirm it's you by stating your name.
Hi, yes, this is Michelle. Hi, um, sorry, hold on, I'm not used to this. Um, okay, so, hi, um, my name's Michelle Resiopi. I'm a resident of Highland Park, I live on South Fourth. Um, I have been to a couple previous meetings, speaking in support of the crossing guards. Um, so, I just wanted, and a couple meetings ago, you had mentioned that you were kind of in the very early exploratory stages, so I just was wondering, where does that exploration stand at the moment? What progress has been made on it? And what is the timeline for when we can expect to hear more about that? Um, I heard the mayor say last time that there was something about the Public Safety Commission is where, but I couldn't, I, I was wondering if it's okay for the public to join those meetings and have input on that at those public safety meetings? Um, and then, uh, I also just wanted to, again, reiterate the fact that, um, the guards should be getting paid, um, in a competitive way to the towns nearby us. Um, so, that would be at least $26 an hour and a minimum number of guaranteed hours per shift. Um, in, if we really want to, um, you know, not have an issue with retaining them. It seems like they're adding new ones now, which is great. Um, and hopefully that can continue, and it is not an issue in the future. So, but if you could just tell me, where does the exploration stand at the moment, and what is the timeline? Um, and just, again, to reiterate that, I don't think that it should be privatized, so, thank you.
Please come to the microphone, say your name, please.
Jackie Ryan, 423 Valentine Street. I'd like to address the lady's issue about the dogs. Uh, so, if everybody knows, the small dog park did not cost the town anything. I am the person responsible for getting it. My dog was attacked in a large park. The materials were all available. They were leftover from the large park, so it didn't cost anything. It was just a matter of the men coming out and erecting the fence. Uh, as far as the dogs, who comes first, people or dogs, it's up to the owners, and a lot of the owners, especially the big dogs owners, are supposed to take responsibility for their animals, and they should be aware of that. Unfortunately, not all people are.
Anyone else answer Terry?
Yes, mayor, um, Mary Forsberg? Um, just one moment, raise for someone else. Yeah, I, Mary, did you want to speak again?
Um, I was gonna wait, I was gonna wait for your comment, but, um, um, but, I mean, I, I'd like to reiterate my concerns about, you know, the financial, um, awareness or whatever of, um, of, uh, of you people about, um, you know, our, our people's concerns in Highland Park about high property taxes. And I am really concerned about, you know, what you're gonna give away in terms of this redevelopment. And I think that the library is, actually, I love the library. I think it's, um, the, the fact that the town spent a million dollars to kind of redo the inside of the library without fixing the roof, and they fixed the roof after they did the library, and the library did leak, um, during the period while it was being re, um, redesigned. Um, so, I, I would like to see a little bit more, um, interest from your part on, um, on the future finances of this town, because we pay very high property taxes, and, you know, from my perspective, I like the library and I, I like public works, and I think they are, they do a good job. But, um, I, I think a lot of people have concerns, and you can't just put this out and say that you're gonna be building landmark buildings, um, and, you know, putting, um, large developments on Track A and Track B, um, and basically turning this, this town into a war zone as you knock down all of the buildings on Raritan Avenue in order to build new buildings that may or may not be successful. So, um, anyway, um, I, I was really, I don't know how my hand got up again, but I actually was waiting to hear what your response was to the million-dollar grant and who actually, I, I'd like to know what legislator, um, uh, sponsored it. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. Um. One final comment here? Yes, final.
Right. Uh, thank you for your answer. Thank you. I will continue about dogs. Sometimes, not only big dogs attack the small dogs, the big dogs can attack people as well, and sometimes happen, and it happens in Highland Park. So, my question, who has to go first if the owner with the dog seeing somebody coming forward, and they go on the sidewalk? So, who has to step out and give the place to the other person walking, or the dog with the person?
This is my question. I don't know if it's clear. Yes?
And just, when we close this session?
Yes, but I want to understand that it's.
Excuse me, um, I, we explain the process. We'll collect all the questions and we'll answer afterwards when the public session is closed, and we're gonna proceed with that in a few seconds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, seeing that there's no further, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved. Second.
Roca?
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman.
Yes.
Councilman Mew?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonic?
Yes.
There's a couple of things that, that came up. There was a typo on our, um, 10-24-239, there was a typo, and it said for equipment. That was not the case. That, that was for the grant that we received from Assemblyman Karabenchik and both Assemblymen Stanley that they put through for us, and we are so grateful that we received this grant for a million dollars to do the opening on, on South Third. So, we're, we're more than gracious and we're more than happy, overjoyed for both grants. The other grant was for a garbage truck, which we are in desperate need of a garbage truck, and that grant, and that resolution number 10-24-238, that was for, uh, for us to get a replacement garbage truck. So, we are in desperate need of these two things, and we were, we were overjoyed that our legislator went to bat for us so we can have these in Highland Park. Um, as it pertain to Classic Cleaners, Terry, I'm gonna ask you if you could just provide a little update on that.
Sure. Um, first of all, Sure, um, first of all, um, our attorney has been in touch with their attorney throughout this process. Informing them of the council's disauthorization for the study to determine whether. The properties in question qualify as areas that need redevelopment with condemnation. That study hasn't commenced yet. You've authorized, the governing bodies authorized it. Once is the study is complete and it's ready to be heard by the planning board, a full notice will be made. A formal notice, I should say, will be made. Well, we have been in communication with the property owner throughout this process and once this decision was made. The attorneys have been in touch with one another, but we haven't hit the point in the, in the process where formal. Legal notice needs to be issued because the study has not, uh, commenced yet. It's just been authorized.
Uh, you know, while you're on that, can you talk about, uh, Ubrees? That, uh, um, the move?
Yes.
We've done, it looks really good from up at the.
So, so yes, uh, the property seventy Woodbridge Avenue, the council authorized the purchase of that. With the intention of relocating Ubrees, uh, into that space. The renovations have been on their way and I understand we're getting closer. I've been away for a little bit, I'm not fully up to speed as to where we are. Um, and so once, once that's completed, we'll be moving forward.
Thank you. Uh, council president, you had something to add as it pertains to the grant that we got for the garbage truck?
Yes.
We did not have to pay for it?
Yeah, yes, thank you very much, um. Oh, boy, no, I'm sorry, I just had it open.
While you're looking at that, I would like to move on to the question of crossing guards. And I believe council member George, I believe that you have not had any meetings as of yet regarding to the.
Thank you, Mayor Phil George liaison to, uh, public safety. Have there been no further meetings with regard to, uh, making any decisions, uh, one way or another on this? It remains, uh, under a general study. Uh, public safety has not had further discussions, uh, since our last report.
Thank you. Uh, council member Poston.
I'm sorry, unrelated to that, I just wanted to know, because I think the commenter, uh, before mentioned something about a grant from Congressman Pallone. Um, and maybe conflated that with one of the grants that we voted on tonight. I just wanted to clarify for the record that the grant that, and again, I would like to, you know, express my gratitude to Congressman Pallone. Um, we've had a lot of success in securing grants this year and thank you to your work on, in, in making that happen, uh, near Elsie. Um, uh, but that, that was a separate grant to design to help with pedestrian and bicycle road safety type thing. So that's a separate grant that was not an item of action tonight, just for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Good, uh, council president.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, no, I just wanted to just, just speak in terms of the, um, uh, resolution ten, twenty-four, two, thirty-eight replacement of the garbage truck. Um, this is a good thing, people. We are working very closely with our state legislators to make sure that we can get at Highland Park and have, can access the funding in order to, to address pressing. Uh, uh, infrastructure, uh, uh, issues as well as upgrades to our fleet. So this is really, really, really great news. Uh, and I did just want to mention that the, you know, part of, part of, part of the, uh, public report from, uh, from DPW, which I don't touch on. I touched on bulk pickup, I touched on the tonnage of the, you know, the garbage, the garbage pickup. But that's also fleet maintenance. Uh, one of the things that you might not know that DPW does is fleet maintenance on their own vehicles. Um, and so last month, we had thirty vehicles serviced or, uh, repaired by either Public Works or, or, or contracted mechanics. Uh, that was, remember, there was fifteen Public Works vehicles and putting twelve police vehicles, well, that's not Thomas here. Uh, and one fire apparatus, one code vehicle and one community services vehicle. So these, these funds directly go to support Highland Park. And when we talk about kind of building up our downtown and creating a more vibrant economic space downtown. Yes, we understand that there might be things that you might like or do or, or don't like, but that's not what we're voting on tonight. We're voting on whether they comply with the, you know, the various logistics that meet. The ability to actually issue whatever it is. We made the policy decision for cannabis, for example, three and a half years ago. So I think it's really important to remember that, that there was a full vetting and that this is, this is a ministerial procedural process. Of just the permitting to live up to the law. Um, but I didn't, I didn't want to, I didn't want to undermine the, uh, the, the work of our legislators when it comes to, uh, helping out. I really did want to emphasize, uh, you know, uh, you know, great gratitude for assistance, you know, Public Works. Excuse me? Uh, in our, uh, Public Works investments as well as infrastructure, very infrastructural investments. As well as meeting the aims of things like our, our, uh, safe walk and, uh, I'm sorry, our bike and pedestrian plan. Which is what, uh, Congressman Pallone's grant we do along there and, uh, and that area up there. So, you know, a lot of moving parts of this all, again, I pointed back to that long season. It's all part of the bigger picture of many moving parts where we try to get things to work in tandem and complement one another. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Um, as it pertains to common courtesy on the walkways or on our sideways, I think that comes down to common courtesy. That somebody needs to step aside if you're on the sidewalk. Um, I think that somebody just need to make a, a decision on, you know, being neighborly and just follow through with common decency and common courtesy. If there is a, a pet and a, and a pet owner on the sidewalk, maybe they might step aside or maybe one person wait until they pass. Um, we do not have any regulation rules slash laws of how people should behave. It's like a universal thing, law that says we behave in a certain manner, and I think it comes down to common courtesy. With that said, um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for November twelfth at seven PM. Thank you all and be safe.